Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, and in accord with DCA guidelines with regard to the functioning of virtual meetings, this regularly scheduled meeting, the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
For Monday, March 1st, 2021, the Jackson Township Planning Board meeting, Mr. Dolan is absent. Dr. Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Riker?
Here.
Mr. Jess Wickie?
Here.
Mr. Loisi?
Yes.
Ms. Britto?
Here.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Fleming?
Here.
Mr. Ricardi is absent. Mr. Herring?
Here.
Mr. Hudak?
Here.
Executive session, councilor, do we have anything?
Chairman.
Payment for Dr. Reporter, Secretary for the City, March 1st, 2021. May I have a motion, please? So move.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes, we have February 8th. I'm sorry. Just February 8th, okay. Minutes for February 8th, regular meeting? Any questions, comments, changes? We have a move to accept.
Okay.
All in favor? Thank you. Resolutions, councilor, I guess we have just one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's resolution memorializing the courtesy review. Thank you, Mr. Cle, for just double checking some of the engineering. It's the courtesy review for and approval of that review for installation of below-grade wastewater metering pump station at Brookwood Parkway.
Thank you. Anyone here to make a motion? One, two, three, second. Local.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Jess Wickie?
Yes.
Mr. Loisi?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Wait, we're moving right along. Okay, changes to the agenda schedule, anything needed? Yes, I'll get to that in a moment. Any legal matters, concerns, nothing?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Board matters, anyone have anything? No, nothing? Board, beautiful. Okay, our first application, block 4201, lot 3, Cedar Swamp Plaza LLC, there has been a request to carry that to March 22nd meeting. There will be no further notice and...
And pursuant to that request for no further notice, the public is directed to check the municipal website and municipal posting for login information.
Thank you. May I have a motion to carry this application to the March 22nd, 2021 meeting?
So move.
Second. Local.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Jess Wickie?
Yes.
Mr. Loisi?
Yes.
Ms. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, now that the matter has been carried, just briefly, I want to direct the board, the board's received a copy of the transcript of this matter as well as the resolution of approval. This is a remand on a narrow issue, but with so many new members of the board, I would ask, first of all, that members who participated utilize the time to review the transcript, to refresh their recollections, however, to ensure that there are sufficient folks eligible to vote, I'd ask that all the members who did not participate to review the transcript, and then Ms. Bono, our board secretary, will provide the proper certification so that everyone is qualified to participate. Even the negative vote. Thank you. Okay, our first application that we're going to hear tonight is block 6501, lot 42.04, Dubin Contracting LLC. Cle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. An agenda with no court commentary or instructions, very refreshing. Anyway, applicants propose or seek preliminary and final site plan approval for 6,000-square-foot two-story office building. The project is compliant with ordinance standards, except for some existing variances for lot area width and frontage, so of course, some testimony from the applicant in support of those variance requests. There's been no environmental impact statements required based or provided based on the square footage, however, the Environmental Commission, or the applicant should address any comments that's been received from the local Environmental Commission. The drawings indicate that public water and sewer facilities will be provided, some testimony from the applicant regarding the site utilization, days and hours of operation, estimated number of employees, things along those lines. Site access is provided by a single two-way driveway connection to West County Line Road. Based on the county jurisdiction, the approval, any approval the board may grant will be conditioned upon review and approval by the Ochi County Planning Board and Engineering Department. There's a single-site circulation aisle providing access to all off-street parking spaces, as well as the proposed office building. There is a design exception required for deficient internal aisle width, 10 feet minimum is required, and eight foot's provided, so some testimony from the applicant regarding that design waiver request. There is a grass paver area provided which will facilitate access to the rear of the building. I believe that was a requirement from the local Bureau of Fire Prevention, and I also received an email indicating the Fire Bureau has reviewed the project and has no objection to it. Also, some commentary from the Bureau of Traffic Safety, also indicating that there's no concerns that are raised. We reviewed the grading and drainage, take no exception to the design that's proposed. The project will require 30 off-street parking spaces, and 30 spaces are provided. The stormwater management facilities will be owned and maintained by the property owner, and the appropriate deed disclosures associated with O&amp;M of those facilities will be required. We reviewed the site lighting and take no exceptions to it. We should have some testimony from the applicant regarding any residential use or zones that might need screening or buffering. The applicant should review the architectural treatments that are proposed. There's a solid waste storage facility that's proposed in front of the building, testimony from the applicant regarding adequacy of facility and proposals for recycling, except for the design exception and the existing variances, projects compliant with ordinance standards.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office has a report dated February 9th of this year. Property is located in the HC Highway Commercial Zone District. I'd like the applicant to give us a detailed description of the proposed use. We note in the Highway Commercial Zone District that business offices are permitted use, professional offices are permitted uses, and commercial offices are permitted uses. For the record, the three existing non-conformities to the lot are the minimum lot area, minimum lot width, and minimum lot frontage. We ask the applicant to provide some testimony regarding those existing non-conformities. Without repeating anything else, Mr. Cle had said, the only other design exception we found was the location of the solid waste dumpster area in the front yard. Front yard area being defined as that area in front of the building, so even though the building's setback, I think more than 200 feet, the dumpster's still out in front of the building, which begs the question, why don't we put the building up front and the parking in the back? But I guess we'll get to that during testimony. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Everybody hear me clearly? Dante Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant, as your professionals so eloquently stated, we are here seeking preliminary and final major site plan. We are here proposing to construct a two-story, about approximately 6,000-square-foot office building with accompanying parking spaces. I have three individuals who are going to provide some testimony tonight. I have Tim Laurie, who's going to provide planning and engineering testimony. I have John Ray, who's going to provide some traffic testimony, and I have Lawrence Schreiber, who's going to provide architectural testimony. So without further ado, and I don't want to waste anybody's time, I'm going to have Mr. Laurie come up, and we're going to get into the engineering and the actual application itself.
Thank you.
Oh, Jason's here, never mind. I got four tonight, then. Come on up. If you could, please state your name.
Well, before you even do that, you raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the information, testimony, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation, and then the chairman will briefly vordere you regarding your qualification?
Yes, my name is Jason Burneyko. That's B-U-R-N-E-Y-K-O. I'm a licensed professional engineer at the firm of D.W. Smith Associates in Wall Township, New Jersey. I'm licensed to practice engineering in the state of New Jersey, and I've testified before this board once before, and numerous other boards in Monmouth and Ocean County.
We accept your credentials, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Jason, if you could please orient the board to the site itself and surrounding areas?
Sure. We've previously provided this exhibit with our submission package. Does this exhibit need to be marked into evidence?
Yes, A, did you pre-mark when you uploaded them? No, I guess not, you're looking, so let's mark that A1 and identify it, please.
A1 is our, the cover sheet from our site plans, and this exhibit is really just to show the vicinity map with the aerial image behind it. This project site is situated on a 0.68 acre property. Property is known as Lot 42.04 in block 6501, located at 2180 West County Line Road in Jackson Township. The existing property is vacant, has some woods cover towards the rear, from the central to the rear of the site. The site is bound on the left by a Mavis Tire Center. It's bound to the north by the Windsor Crescent multifamily residential complex. It's bound to the east by vacant property, and it's bound to the south by West County Line Road. The site's located in the Highway Commercial Zone of Jackson Township, the HC Zone. The applicant's proposing to construct a 6,000-square-foot two-story office building on the property. Professional use, professional office, commercial office is a permitted use within the HC Zone. The proposed site does meet all of the required bulk requirements of the HC Zone in relation to building setbacks, building height, and impervious coverage. However, the existing lot is an undersized lot and does require variances for lot area, lot width, and lot frontage, which are all existing non-conformities, which will be discussed later in the planning testimony. The existing lot is rectangular in shape. It's approximately 100 feet wide by 280 feet long. The site frontage is a divided county road, that's West County Line Road, Route 526. There's a center median on Route 526 with two travel lanes and a shoulder in each direction. I'm now going to put up another exhibit here.
We'll mark that as A2.
Yes, please. I'm crooked here.
Can you please identify A2?
Yes, A2 is our layout and dimension plan from our site plan set. The, due to the narrow rectangular geometry of the lot, the proposed 6,000-square-foot office building is situated at the rear of the property, with the parking area contained in the front of the building. Based on township code, there's one parking stall required for every 200 square feet of floor area. This results in a parking requirement of 30 parking stalls. The site provides 30 parking stalls, each are nine by 18 feet, which meets code requirement. The ADA standards require two of the 30 stalls to be ADA accessible. We've provided two handicap stalls adjacent to the front of the building with an accessible walkway. The accessible walkway is, meets requirements of a 2% maximum slope. There's a 26-foot-wide drive aisle, which is provided, 24-foot is the minimum requirement, so we've made the, made the aisle width a little bit wider than is required. There are improvements provided along the front, the site frontage along West County Line Road. We're providing curbing along West County Line Road and a sidewalk with a, as the, with handicap curb ramps as it crosses the proposed driveway entrance. There's an area near the building which is provided for small truck loading. This is expected to be UPS and FedEx-type trucks, box trucks. In accordance with our direct correspondence with the fire official, that's Michael Grossman, the fire official, he had offered some suggestions, and we worked with his office regarding the provision of a 20-foot-wide grass paver access for emergency fire trucks or emergency vehicles to have access to the side of the building here. Mr. Grossman did issue a letter of approval for this design and layout on February 18th, 2021. The trash enclosure, as Mr. Peters had indicated, is located in technically the front of the building, which does require a design waiver. The trash enclosure is located approximately 150 feet from the roadway frontage. There is adequate landscaping and a privacy fence around the trash enclosure, so we do not feel that that would be any problem issuing a design waiver for the location of that trash enclosure. It would not be unsightly from the, from the roadway. Regarding the grading and topography of the site, the proposed grading of the site does follow the existing grading patterns. The site drains and grades from the rear of the property all the way towards the front down County Line Road. It's an approximate 2.5% slope across the entire property. The ADA accessible areas are graded at a 2% maximum slope, which is within ADA standards. The grading, the proposed grading does divert stormwater runoff around the building, down both sides of the building, and the parking area also is graded towards the front of West County Line Road. All grading and construction activities will be performed in accordance with an approved plan from the Freehold Soil Conservation District. That plan is currently under review, and those measures will include appropriate silt fencing, inlet protection, dust control, and a stone tracking pad at the entrance of construction. Through the addition of the impervious surfaces on the site, additional runoff from stormwater is, becomes increased in regards to the pre-development condition. The requirements for stormwater management are that the rates and flows generated at the post-development condition must be reduced to levels of runoff below that of the pre-construction development condition. The stormwater management design, which I'm going to slip to another exhibit here.
We'll mark this exhibit at A3?
Yes, please.
This will be A3, which is our landscaping plan. The stormwater design for this development is broken into two underground storage systems. The first system is located at the rear of the building. This system has all the connections for the roof drains from the proposed buildings. Those roof drains tie directly into this underground system. This system then infiltrates that runoff into the ground and provides an overflow inlet for any larger storms. When the larger storms come in, the system bubble, we call this a bubbler inlet, it bubbles out of this inlet and then flows towards the side of the building down to the second stormwater system which we've designed. The second stormwater system picks up all the runoff from the parking areas and collects it into two inlets which are located at the front of the property. Because the paved parking area does have suspended solids and grease and oils from cars that park in the parking lot, we did provide a water quality unit before this runoff from the paved parking area enters the second underground recharge system here. Once it is routed through this water quality unit, it then enters the underground system where it can infiltrate in the ground, and once again, this entire system has a bubbler inlet here which will, once the system fills up, it bubbles out of this inlet and then continues to the West County Line Road drainage system where it flows down to, there is an inlet over, I'm going to refer back to exhibit A2, there is a stormwater inlet at the adjacent Mavis Tire Center frontage, where any water that infiltrates bubbles out of this existing system will be routed to that existing inlet. There were no environmental constraints located on the existing site. The Jackson Township Environmental Commission did have a review of the set of plans, and they found the plan designed to be acceptable and offered no comments. Utilities are provided by the Jackson Township Municipal Utilities Authority. We are providing sewer and water service from West County Line Road up through the site into the proposed office building. There is a fire hydrant proposed at the front of the building. This was, fire hydrant was provided at this location at the direction of the Jackson Township Municipal Utilities Authority, and the county had also requested a fire hydrant along County Line Road, which is provided. The plans have been, received preliminary approval from the Jackson Township Municipal Utilities Authority, and we have resubmitted plans based on some minor comments that they had.
Thank you, Jason. Jason, have you reviewed the professional planning and engineering reports?
Yes, we have.
And were there any comments in there that we cannot comply with?
There was one comment regarding a requirement of a 10-foot-wide planted island, safety island. That location is up here by the trash enclosure. We've provided eight feet. The reason why we did not make that a 10-foot requirement is because that would have pushed the existing parking closer to West County Line Road. We wanted to keep our 20-foot requirement for the parking setback from West County Line Road, and I feel that the eight-inch safety island with the proposed landscape in there is adequate to separate the parking area from the loading area.
Okay, so other than that, we can comply with any of their technical comments?
Yes, we can.
All right. And Mr. Peters raised earlier, he said, why, why can't we put the building in the front and parking in the back? I know, I believe you touched on it a little bit, could you just elaborate on that a little bit further?
We felt that this was the, the best location for the building. We reviewed it with the client and the developer. They wanted their building setback, and the, the parking in front of the building offered the best, best design for the developer's needs.
Would there be potential access issues due to the width of the lot?
Strel Fury, could you speak into?
Sorry about that. Would there be potential width issues and access if the, if the building was to flip?
The building right now is basically set at its setback limitations to the side yards, and if we move that building any further to the, to the side yards area, it was, it would create a building setback issue, and there's just not enough room really to put a, to put a full, to put a full drive aisle safely to the side of the building while adhering to all the setback requirements.
Thank you. And I know we didn't touch on this yet, but we, there, there are no proposed tenants at this time, correct?
No, there's no known proposed tenants. I have not heard from the developer that he has any.
And any, any tenants that would be proposed would be permitted uses in the zone?
They would be permitted uses, yes.
And then, as it relates to office hours, do you, can you touch on what we're anticipating for this site?
The, the anticipated office hours, based on information that I received from the developer, are that the office building will be operating Monday through Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Saturdays and Sundays from 6:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. Again, they do not know who the tenants are, but those would, those were the anticipated hours of operation, and the majority of the activities would be between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m.
Typical business hours.
Typical business hours for, for an office building.
And trash collection would be private collector?
Trash collection would be private collector, based on a schedule that would, that would meet the requirements of the building, whether it's once a week or two times a week. You know, I guess that they would have, that would have to be evaluated on how often they would need trash pickup. But the trash area is, it's a 12 by 12 trash enclosure with room for, we've detailed that there's room for a dumpster and some recycling containers.
And you touched on anticipated deliveries, so the site would be receiving UPS trucks? We're not anticipating tractor trailers or anything along those lines, correct?
No, there would not be any anticipated tractor trailers. It would be limited to the delivery services, whether it's Amazon, UPS, FedEx, and the, you know, their typical box trucks.
I do not believe they have anything further from Jason.
Anyone have any questions for this gentleman?
Yes, that could, that would apparently work, although we are, again, we are at the, we are at our building setback limitations where pushing the building two feet to the rear would encroach into the rear setback area. Right, that, that could be a possibility.
Mr. Fleming, are you comfortable with firefighting apparatus getting in and around this building?
Well, the fire director is already okay, and I'd love to see if it goes further. We have access to the back of the building.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Riker?
What is the alignment of the front of your building versus the front of the building for Mavis? How far is this thing back?
I know the Mavis building is, is shown here, not the entire building, but the, the building outline along the east is shown as being right over here. So approximately 100?
of the front of the building for Mavis? How far is this thing back?
I know the Mavis building is, is shown here. Not the entire building, but the, the building outline along the east is shown as being right over here.
So approximately 100 foot from front, from front to front?
No, it's, it's probably about 60 to 65 feet or so.
He asked from the front of the building to the front of the?
Oh, I'm sorry, from the front to the front. Sorry, I misunderstood the question. It's approximately 100 feet.
And there was no way to, to set that building up closer so that when we're driving down that road, that things look in alignment? Not exactly like a bookshelf, but like things all the way through. And having, you know, having a dumpster enclosure in front of a building, it just, the front of the building is your best appearance. And having a dumpster there, it, it's not putting your best foot forward. You know, you, you can have the nicest cedar fence, a dumpster is a dumpster is a dumpster. And it, it looks great the first week it's there. A year and a half in on a project, it's bashed up, broken, I mean, you know, I, I deal with Chase Bank down the road and the gates are a mess. It's a beautiful bank, it's just, the reality is a dumpster enclosure is a dumpster enclosure. You can't dress it up. And I, I think, I think you guys could do better on that. I don't know how, but I think you could do better.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In furtherance of Mr. Riker's comments, testimony that Jason gave originally, if, if the board really wanted to see the building move forward, you almost want to take the, the red pen out. They would require some side yard relief. Because in order to get a 24-foot wide road pass there, you'd have to pick a side, start from the right-hand side. You'd need five or so feet to get to the road, then 24 feet, then six or eight feet to the building and however the building is wide. And then whatever's left on the other side, they'd probably require some side yard setback relief. And that would be what the board would have to consider in terms of revising or flipping this layout. So if you want to run a road past this building, so that the building's up front and the parking and the dumpster in the rear, the trade-off would be they'd probably need a side yard setback variance because they'd have to stick the building to one side in order to get the access to the parking and dumpster in the rear. So that's really the, you know, without getting up and marking it up like a teacher at a chalkboard, I, I think that's the stop here. Yes, you can bring the building forward, but in order to accomplish that, you'd probably have to give them relief and verify they could still get the yield they're looking for by doing that.
And your professional opinion would be to orient it how?
Well, the, the benefit to having the access road run past the building is you'd have fire access to three sides of the building, front, the right side and the rear. So there are benefits. Obviously, they can't put the building up on the street frontage, they have to be back some distance. And again, to the extent the applicant says, listen, we think that's not a crazy idea, but we may need to reskinch it and make sure we can get 30 parking spaces so we can get 6,000 square feet and still stick the dumpster in the back of the building. It may simply require some give and take in terms of variance relief from the board to get what the board may perceive to be as a better physical product out in the field.
And in your planning experience, do you think that it behooves this board to see that the businesses are lined up along that road or?
I, I think if the board looks at, this could be considered an infill project along County Line Road, simply because of its width. It's not a very wide, it's a deep piece, but it's not very wide. So if you consider it an infill project and you looked at other types of areas where it was more urban in terms of the street frontages, a Toms River, a Freehold Borough, often you'd see the buildings up front and the parking in the rear for the reasons that Mr. Riker put on the record previously. What do you want to see when you drive down the road? I mean, while I, I don't doubt the applicant's testimony, is the best thing for a new building to be set back 160 feet or to be set back 50 feet? So, again, without, you know, we've sort of sprung these comments on the applicant to the extent they're able to answer them, but from a planning perspective, it's a better streetscape to look at a brand-new building than a brand-new parking lot.
Thank you.
And to Mr., to Mr. Fleming's comment, you could make the building smaller. And if the building were smaller, it would give you room for a driveway situation and three sides of protection. These are things to consider.
Yes, I do know with the, with the parking in the rear also. There's, there's not really a lot of room to have a parking area with a, with a turnaround area. So that's, that was another reason why we selected the parking in front, because we could have an aisle with parking on both sides as opposed to coming up with a, with an aisle on one side of the building.
Respectfully, Jason, it, it's parallel to the building and as soon as you get behind the building, you bring it down the center of the property. I mean, I think the, at least some of the board members are willing to entertain some variance relief if they can get the building flipped, I guess. If you're telling us that you've looked at it in some detail and it doesn't, either you can't or it doesn't get the yield, I think you should tell the board that, otherwise I think they're asking if you're willing to take a look at something that might be other than what you presented before us this evening. But if that's what your client wants to present to the board this evening, let us know.
Anyone else have any questions?
I, I do have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm just wondering, I'm just, I'm curious actually, why in a two-story building was there not an elevator proposed?
That could be addressed by our architect's testimony.
Okay, thank you.
I did the, we did the site design, not the interior of the building.
Okay, thank you.
So we, we've heard your comments, I think we would like to proceed with the application. We can have, I can have the architect come up and then maybe that will help you visualize the building and what we're proposing, so you can get a feel for why we are proposing what we are currently today.
Okay.
And I do have some handouts. Our architect appearing via Zoom, I don't know.
Microphone, please, microphone.
So our, our architect's appearing via Zoom, so I don't know how we, we bring him on or?
What is your architect's name?
His name is Lawrence Schreiber. Lawrence Schreiber. That's it, yes.
Did you hear our technicians comment?
I did not.
Anthony?
Okay. Anybody, can anybody?
So that, in theory, you should be able to hear, Mr. Schreiber, can you please put your audio and video on or your, our tech, technical person's trying to let you in the meeting?
It's invisible. And in a part of cleanup, we did, because of the thought of the lot itself, we have sent out buy-sell notices to the, and we received no comments or offers by or sell. And additionally, to the Windsor Crescent has requested that if the board were to act favorably on this application, as a condition of the approval, that we, that the applicant would install similar fencing to, I believe there was another applicant on a different site that agreed to accommodate that. And my client is willing to accommodate that for Windsor Crescent.
Does anyone know what kind of fencing that was?
It was. I'm not sure what fencing it was, but I, well, as a condition, we'll have it match whatever that, that fencing that was.
How about gold-plated? I'm kidding, but.
Etched, we could do etched, just etched. So I think we do have Lawrence on. Lawrence, you hear us?
Yes, I do.
Hey, Lawrence.
All right, Mr. Schreiber, you raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present to the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I affirm.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation? Then the chairman will ask you some questions to qualify you as an expert.
Sure, Lawrence Schreiber, S.C.H.R.E.I.B.R. I'm a licensed architect, a senior architect for the last year and a half with BF2 Associates. I've been a licensed architect in New Jersey for over 33 years and I'm licensed through NCOR in a total of currently nine states and have testified on many state boards of zoning and planning boards.
Thank you. We've set few credentials.
Thank you. Lawrence, I handed out some color renderings of the proposed site. Could you please just orient the board to what we're proposing?
Well, before you do that, you got to mark it, right?
Yeah, A4. A4. And we'll identify it as a color elevation of the proposed site.
Was this pre, was this forwarded to be pre-marked?
That I'm not sure. I believe we have. I don't know if it's coming up. Are we waiting for it to come up or?
Anthony?
It's a, it's a color rendering? Architectural? It looks like a beautiful building, it's a shame it's so far back from the, the road. That's it, right there.
There we go.
So that's A4. Lawrence, you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Can you please explain to the board what, what we're looking at?
Sure. It's, I'm looking at the front facade and part of the right side of the building. The material, the primary material is a synthetic stucco of, of a light color with, on the left with a wood grain paddling on the part of the second floor banding. And on the right side, the entrance area is a glass aluminum frame storefront system with reflective tinted glass and with some dark stucco highlights on the top of the glass area. And that, what other information would you like?
So part of the board's professionals reviews, they asked a question. Please advise how the site will function to accommodate for ADA compliance. So how, how are we accommodating for that on the?
So the, as far, once you would, you would come into the building, the first floor is accessible ADA compliant. The second floor is not required for this size building to have an elevator because it's under 10,000 square feet is the, is the trigger point of when an elevator is required for, for an office building. And there's, in the lobby, there's a stair that accesses the second floor, what would be reception, there's a, two toilet rooms on each floor and shown as that, as this indicative of, you know, possible locations for tenants as well as a break room and a janitor's closet to show for, for prospective tenants.
And where would the AC and other utility be stored? Would it be on the roof?
Most likely the HVAC would be setback and screened as rooftop units.
And the site, it's the, the elevation, the, I guess the, the layout itself would continue throughout the whole building minus the front portion, it would have that same multi-layered construction?
Except for the glass entry area, the sides, like on, it dejected when the Z2 exhibit of the four elevations has the same colors and look as the, as the front elevation.
We have nothing further. As it relates to architecture.
I, I go back to my, I have a question.
Certainly, go ahead.
My original question regarding the elevator, I, I understand your comment that because of the building size, it's not a requirement. However, I, I'm just thinking, given that right now you have no proposed tenants, there's a certain amount of assumption that your future tenants and their visitors will not have any ambulatory issues or problems. Is that wise?
The answer is that this is a standard throughout the country, in the states, small buildings that are not a medical use or public building do not require an elevator for such a small tenant that it would be, it would be something that a, a person wanted to go there, that they could, they could go to the office that has, the staircase is what's called the accessible staircase, it's a wide staircase. So if there was someone in emergency that they were hurt or something, they could be by, by the, like, you know, first aid officials carried down the stairs. But this, this is the standard requirement that what most buildings, people are doing it, unless it's a, if it's a building that's a healthcare building, then it would require to have for a second floor, even a smaller building, like for medical office, you couldn't have on the second floor if that was the case.
Interesting. Thank you.
Welcome.
Does this building have a basement?
Is there? No proposed basement.
And it basically set up for two suites, one on each floor, is that correct?
That's what it's typically set up for.
Correct.
Potentially the, the idea is to have two tenants.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Correct.
Okay, so we're going to have two tenants. I'm an employer, I'm sure a few other people are employers here. So in the world of 2021, being an employer, you're an attorney. How is your applicant going to deal with the exclusionary practice of hiring someone who's handicapped? If a tenant goes up on that second floor, they're going to be excluding someone who is in a wheelchair or has a bad knee or a veteran. I, I take exception to a, an accessible staircase. It doesn't exist as an exception. It, it's a, in my construction experience, I've never seen an accessible staircase. So I'd like to, excuse me, I'd like to know how someone with any disability, even a broken ankle, is going to make it to the second floor. And to have a building And to have a building in this day and age that's exclusionary is just beyond. With the understanding that the code is the minimum requirement, the minimum requirement, it's not a best practice. I, I, I can't believe you're intending to build a building like this in Jackson Township, which is a progressive town, that's going to exclude half the population in that building. It just, it, it just boggles my mind. I'll end it there.
Okay, anyone else? No. Um, Mr. Alferi, any comments?
So, uh, nothing further as it relates to the architectural side of things. I, I understand Mr. Riker's points. Um, we've, we've certainly looked at it and we are, we are compliant with what the code requires. But I do understand uh your, your concerns. Um, I'll certainly bring that back to my client and have, have a conversation with them about that. Um, but we do have traffic testimony and planning testimony, so I don't, I don't wanna waste any further time.
Traffic and what?
Uh, planning.
Okay.
So I'm gonna have John Ray come up and provide some traffic testimony.
Sure.
It wasn't on, may I press the bottom?
There you go. Mr. Ray, you've raised your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Full name, spell your last, affiliation and whatever level of expert qualification you feel like putting on.
Uh, John Ray with McDonough and Ray Associates, Manasquan, New Jersey, uh, traffic and transportation engineers. I'm a licensed professional engineer specializing in traffic and I've testified before this board on numerous occasions.
We accept this credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, John, if you could just uh go through your report and uh discuss?
Sure, I'm, I'm gonna be very brief tonight. There's not a lot to talk about for a six thousand square foot uh office building. Uh, the property is located on the north side of County Line Road, in between the traffic signals at Villanova Drive to the west and Brewers Bridge Road to the east. That is where the U-turns will be made for traffic entering and exiting the facility because of the divided nature of County Line Road. Uh, we did do traffic counts at the, at the intersection of Villanova Drive and County Line Road. We did an analysis of the site driveway to County Line Road, which will only permit right turn in and right turn out only movements. The driveway will operate at level of service A during peak hours. Of course, County Line Road is under the jurisdiction of the county and we still need to get county approval. And essentially, we're gonna generate less than ten peak hour trips. Uh, the parking meets the ordinance requirement. I've sat here and I've listened to some of the comments and you know, as far as the site plan is concerned, from a traffic perspective, I think everything works. We have adequate parking. Uh, I know there may be some other concerns that the board has. I've, I've heard them. But from a traffic perspective, the site's properly designed and laid out. We'll have a good level of service and really, that's about it.
Thank you, John.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Um, John, for the record, your original report dealt with a seventy-eight hundred square foot building and thirty-nine parking spaces?
That was October twenty nineteen, yes, and then it was revised, correct.
Um, can you discuss what, if any, improvements are gonna need to be done along the county frontage?
Uh, well, that's up to the county. I would anticipate that uh there might be a property dedication that's required to the county. And as far as curbing and widening, um, I don't know if Jason has reached that to the county yet. Have we made a county application, Jason? Has the county asked for any right-of-way dedication and widening along the property frontage?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I just asked our, our site engineer if the county has required anything of us and apparently they have not, at least as of this juncture.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just hopefully just two brief questions. Do you perceive, following up on Mr. Peter's question, the need for perhaps like a decelerated lane to turn into? Or will someone use the shoulder?
No, they, they would, you know, for something as small as this, they would use the shoulder. The county typically requires a deceleration lane for a project that has more than two hundred parking spaces. I think that's the county requirement and we're well short of that.
And the second question, given the fact that the tenants have yet to be delineated by way of example, hypothetical, let's say one of the two spaces is divided into two fifteen hundred square foot um office spaces with the three thousand on top. Does that change, does the mix of tenants, it all change the parking counts?
I, I don't believe so. And very interestingly enough, I'm on the second floor of a six thousand square foot building and we only have fifteen hundred square feet and we have myself, Scott, his wife Sue, we've got three people and fifteen hundred square feet. So I don't think it will change anything as far as parking or the traffic is concerned.
And um, there was a representation made by the applicant's attorney that uh in general, it would perceive the uses to be all that's permitted. Um, are you concerned from a traffic safety and a traffic engineering perspective that um any mix of, of the permitted uses would adversely affect the, the parking?
I do not believe medical office is permitted. That would be the one caveat I would have, you know, that might generate more traffic in parking and as long as it's within what the ordinance requires as far as general office, I, I don't have a concern.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Reiter.
Thank you.
And I have one more individual to provide. Can we have a five-minute break?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, five minutes. So, members of the public, eight thirty-five.
Chairman, for the five-minute break, uh, so I had a conversation with my clients and the other professionals we've brought out tonight. Um, we, my clients did make mention to me that they did explore options to um different site alignments. Um, and what we're proposing tonight was in an effort to avoid additional variances being sought. Um, but based upon what the board members have said thus far and the board professional, um, it, it would appear that you're looking for something a little bit different than what we're proposing. So uh, instead of having our planner come up and provide additional testimony, we're gonna request that we, we carry our meeting to the next, or our application to the next meeting. And uh, we're, we're gonna uh go back and take a look at, to see if we can rearrange the site to address your comments and concerns.
Appreciate that. And, and I have to say, the, the building looks beautiful, it really does. And, and it's a shame to hide it so far back, so um, that's, that's my own personal opinion. Um, so I guess, uh, how long do you need before you would come back?
Um, what, what's the early, what's the next meeting, I guess, next month?
Well, well, we have quite a full schedule. Um, it appears that um we are pretty well booked until um April twenty-sixth. There are no other applications that evening. You would be the first.
April twenty-sixth would be acceptable.
Okay, thank you.
With no further notice?
Yeah, uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may, members of the public, anyone um participating on application? Dubin Contracting LLC, block sixty-five oh one, lot forty-two point oh four. This matter is being carried at the request of the applicant with the accession of the board to the April twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one meeting without the need for further notice. The public is directed to the municipal website and public notice regarding uh process and uh access to the meeting. Uh, would someone care to make a motion to carry this to our April twenty-sixth meeting, please?
Motion to carry. For a second.
Second, and roll call, please.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Just Wiki?
Yes.
Mr. Luise?
Yes.
Ms. Britto?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the board. Have a good evening.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Um, Mr. Dolan, um, can you hear me? I, I see that you are now a panelist. If you could unmute, unmute yourself and um respond. Mr. Dolan?
Sir.
Hi, how are you? When did you come in?
About um seven thirty-five.
Oh, okay, so you were in on the whole thing. Wonderful.
That's correct.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, our uh next application is block five six zero one, lot sixty-five, Center State Healthcare System. Um, Mr. Klee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. An application for preliminary and final major site plan. The applicant's proposing a two thousand or just about a thirteen, three thousand square foot building in addition uh to the existing seventy-three hundred uh square foot medical office building that's been previously, previously constructed on, on the, on the site. There is a number of existing variants, conditions uh which the applicant should, should address. There's also a um, an additional or a um new variance, um, a request for parking areas setback and a minimum sign set, or minimum sign right-of-way setback, which the applicant should, should also address. The um, uh, there's um, um, no environmental concerns. The app Environmental Commission has indicated no objection to the proposal. The uh development will, uh proposes to abandon an existing separate system and connect to a public sewer uh within Bartley Road. Um, and the um, appears the applicant will, or the project will also connect the public water facilities. Some testimony from the applicant regarding site utilization, proposed operations. Any modifications to establish them, operations should be discussed. Uh, the uh site access um is um a full movement, a driveway connection to Bartley Road as well as an existing cross-access easement during a joining uh property. Again, um, the uh project is along um uh County Line Road, so they'll need approval from the um uh county pl- uh planning board. Uh, based on the total square footage proposed, a separate loading area is required. Um, no loading zone is indicated, so some testimony from the applicant in support of that design waiver re- request. Um, the uh new total square footage and the medical office use will require sixty-nine off-street parking spaces and fifty-six are provided, so some testimony from the applicant uh with respect to that um design exception. There is a minimum, as I indicated, there's a minimum parking area setback, uh ten, ten feet's required and nine point eight feet is provided. Uh, the development proposal um uh does require curbs and sidewalks along all existing roadway frontages. So any roadway or any improvement waiver that might be granted uh should um uh re- uh require contribution to the uh, to the pedestrian safety fund. Uh, the app, uh, the modified site grading, uh, we find to be acceptable. Uh, the project or the addition will utilize the existing uh stormwater management systems that previously constructed on the site, so some testimony from the applicant indicating adequacy of the uh, that existing stormwater uh system, uh, which had testimony from the applicant regarding the um architectural treatments are proposed as well as the new um site lighting and landscaping. As I had indicated, there is a variance required for the assigned setback, twenty-five feet required and eight foot is provided. Uh, we provided some uh tech- uh technical revisions to the applicant. Um, no further comments at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office has a report dated December twenty-ninth of last year. The site's located in the highway commercial zone. So not unlike the application we just heard, the highway commercial zone permits business offices as a permitted use, professional offices as a permitted use and commercial offices as a permitted use. Um, we'd asked the applicant's attorney and professionals to discuss um both the history of the project. We were able to find records going back to the mid-seventies on the original approval for this building um as well as what's being proposed and their ability to construct their proposal within the highway commercial zone. Assuming we can get past that, then the application correctly stands before the planning board. If we can't, then we may need to take a break and decide whether or not this needs to get transferred to the zoning board of adjustment. Mr. Klee handled a number of the variance relief items. Um, I believe the existing lot depth may be deficient, so there may be a variance that's required from that existing condition. As it relates to the traffic circulation, the parking and the loading, again, this is an existing site that's being expanded. Um, so the layout of the project, you would assume, was either approved or approved with some relief. However, we'd asked the applicant to go through um what's currently on the site and how it does or does not comply with the current Jackson Township land use ordinance requirements and how their proposal would either comply or require relief from the township requirements. Our report lists in a number of places for traffic circulation, landscaping, lighting and solid waste, um, some waivers that may be required either from the existing conditions or from what's being proposed. But I think as we go through the history of the project, some of these things will just fall into place. So I'll stop for now until we hear the testimony. Thank you.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, consultants, thank you very much for having us here tonight. For the record, my name is Michael Vitiello. I'm an attorney licensed to practice in the state of New Jersey. I'm here representing the applicant. A lot of my work's already been done for me with regard to that summary, so I will get right down to business. Can everybody hear me okay with the mask on?
It's a little muffled.
I'm pretty far from people, so. Is this a little better?
Much better.
Okay, there you go. Um, so, thank you again. Um, the application's been briefly summarized already via your consultants. We have an existing medical office building that Center State uses. Center State's the contract, so they're already occupying the building. They're also the contract purchaser of the building and they're here tonight seeking to add a small expansion to the existing building. Um, I have with me here tonight representatives, executives from Center State Hospital. I also have with me our civil engineer, we have a traffic witness, a planner and also our architect. Um, so if it pleases the board, we can start with our initial witness, our civil engineering witness. Although uh your engineers mentioned a little bit about the history of our application and the prior approval in nineteen seventy-four, the documentation we have. Uh, the site was approved uh by a doctor, um, originally by the planning board. We have those records from the municipality. The municipality doesn't have more um documentation on the prior approval. Um, but the doctor who obtained the approval, um, his approval was memorialized in correspondence back and forth from the board to the board of the applicant's attorney. Um, the definition in your ordinance and my professional planner, she's testifying virtually today. She's uh with you in your Zoom right now. Your definition for this zone, the professional office definition includes a medical, the doctor's office as part of that. So for those reasons, we feel we're properly for the planning board. Uh, we'd be happy to discuss it further if anybody wants to discuss it further, or my planner can chime in if you'd like. Or if you'd like us to roll into engineering testimony too, we're happy to do that too.
Oh, go ahead. You can begin with your engineer.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, and you just wanna swear one witness at a time, right? You don't wanna?
That's correct.
Okay, so my first witness, Mr. Les Cabbage.
So you've raising your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth. Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, uh, your affiliation?
Yes, my name is Mark Les Cabbage, that's spelled L E S C A V A G E. I'm a senior project manager at Mazer Consulting.
Now, I know Mr. Les Cabbage has recently testified before the board. Again, I can certainly have him talk about his education and his professional.
He did, I, I recall.
Last week, actually.
Yes, thank you.
He had his mask on.
We accept his credentials, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, Mr. Les Cabbage, the proposal that we have here before the board, were they prepared under plans done under your direction and our control?
Yes, they were.
Thank you. And using the plans, you have them here as exhibits tonight?
Yes.
And our exhibits were provided via electronic format to the board secretary to be uploaded to the website. We also have copies here tonight. So, Mr. Les Cabbage, using your exhibits or otherwise, I'd like you to start by describing for the board how the uh, the site currently for the board how the site currently exists, please?
Absolutely. And in doing that, and for the benefit of the people that are on the Zoom call, the exhibit I'm going to refer to first is 21-0128-aerial-location-reduced. If you can pull that up, it'd appreciate it. That's the one up now.
And we'll mark that A1 as well. Were they pre-marked or?
They were all provided in both formats, but not pre-marked yet.
All right, so let's mark it A1, please.
So for the record, that was marked A1 in the upper right-hand corner with today's date. Mr. Les Cabbage, could you just describe real quick what we've marked as A1?
Absolutely. This is an aerial location map showing the site as it exists. Okay, for the benefit of the board and the public, you can see the north arrow is up to the top right of the page. So when I'm referring two-directionally, I'll say to the right is north, to the left is south, towards the top of the page is the west, and towards the bottom of the page is the east. Okay, so the subject lot is block 5601, lot 65. It is a 1.116 acre rectangular lot with one exception that I'll mention in a second, which exists at the corner of the North County Line Road and Bartley Road. And referring to the aerial location map, you could see that it's rectangular except for this small piece in the south, southwest corner, which is adjacent to the North County Line Road ramp. And that piece was taken in 1996 by the county to allow that off-ramp to go through Bartley Road. So before that, you had a completely rectangular lot. Lot is wholly within the HC Highway Commercial Zone with the, and I'll describe the surrounding uses, to the southeast. You have the assisted living complex, the orchards. To the west, you have the Hampshire Hills Residential Subdivision in the R1 Zone. Northeast, you have the Bartley Healthcare Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. And to the southwest, you have a bank site along North County Line Road. What you have on the lot, as described previously, is an existing 7,370 square foot medical office building. And that includes the basement within the facility, which is only used for storage. The access to that lot is through a 24-foot-wide driveway off of Bartley Road to the north end of the site, and that driveway traverses through to the southeast end of the site and through into the orchards complex with a shared driveway. Now with that, off of that access driveway, are, is parking enough for 49 spaces, including three handicap spaces, which exist on the east end of the building. The site is relatively flat. It's somewhere around 1% slope coming from the southeast end up to the northwest end of the site, towards the drainage going towards Bartley Road. There are several non-conformities with the lot, several which were created by the taking of the county. Specifically, the lot depth where 200 feet is required at the location closest to the ramp, you have the lot depth at 146.79 feet. Also, the front setback of the existing building adjacent to the off-ramp from North County Line Road is 48.9 feet, where 60 feet is required in the zone. There is also two parking setback deviations, existing non-conformities. One being the parking setback from a non-residential property line, which is the parking that runs along the east end of the property adjacent to the orchards. 9.8 feet is existing, and 10 feet is required. There is also a requirement for a parking setback from a residential property line, which, since you have the Hampshire Hills across the street, we would consider that the parking on the northwest end of the property would be adjacent to that residential zone and would require that setback, which is 20 feet required, and the existing is at 19.6 feet. Also, the existing monument sign, which is at the southwest end of this property, this location, adjacent to the ramp, is 18.6 feet off the right-of-way, where an existing ground or monument sign within the ordinance is required to be 25 feet. So that's also an existing non-conformity. So that's pretty much the existing conditions. I'll go into what the proposal is referring to, I guess that would be A2 exhibit.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'll mark this next one, A2, with today's date?
Thank you. Mr. Dolan, are you raising your hand? Oh.
So if you're following along virtually, and you're looking at the exhibits, this is exhibit 21-0128-site-plan-reduced. And to describe the exhibit, this is a color rendering of the site layout overlaid on the aerial.
Thank you. And, you know, obviously now, can you please address the board regarding what we propose to change on the site under the proposal?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's close. It looks almost like that, same coloring, but it's the different one. Okay. Yeah, we, it's right.
Yeah, I think it is on the website. If it starts 21-0128. There's two of them that start 21.
There might be two that start that way.
There's one other one that starts with 21. Yeah. It's not a duplicate. There's one that starts. Yeah, possibly the next tab up.
The one that's already open, but next tab, maybe?
There it is.
There you go.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's been marked A2 for the record. Color rendering site plan, it's entitled at the top, rendered.
So you can see the color rendering. This is in the same orientation as the aerial location map. What you can see here is the existing building, which is in the center of the site and is a tan color. And then just to the east of it, or towards the bottom of the page, you can see a little darker representation of a smaller rectangle. That rectangle represents a 2,964-one-story addition to the medical office building. In addition to that 2,964 square feet, there's also the addition of a 49-square-foot vestibule enclosure on the north side of the existing building to be utilized as the entrance to the addition. So there is also some changes to the parking area. So in the area, the proposed addition, there was seven parking spaces, including three handicap spaces. At that location, you will now have four spaces, including three handicap spaces. So we are losing three spaces there. You're also proposing a new parking area adjacent to Bartley Road on the west side of the building, where 12 additional spaces are going. But with those 12 additional spaces, we're losing four spaces along the existing parking area. To compensate for that, we are also adding two spaces on the eastern, the eastern parking area, existing parking area. So if you do that math, there's a net increase of seven spots for a total of 56 spaces being proposed for, for the project. And I think what was previously stated, for the medical office, there's one space required for every 150 square feet. So the total with the addition for the building will be 10,383 square feet, which would require 70 parking spaces. So this is the nature of the variance we're seeking. We think this is adequate parking, which our traffic engineer will address. We are maintaining the handicap stalls as proposed, so we have two at the southeast end of the building. And for the purposes of gaining entrance to the existing building, there is an entrance on the southwest end of the building, and those two spots will allow handicap access to that existing entrance. And we are proposing at the north end of the proposed addition, another handicap space, and that will go into a proposed ramp to go into the addition. Also being proposed is a trash enclosure, which is a 10-by-18 split-block enclosure, which we've proposed on the south end of the proposed addition to allow access through the shared drive from the orchards. And it will be landscaped on two sides. The only side it will not be landscaped on would be on the end where the handicap spaces are being proposed. In speaking with the client, we understand the circulation and the type of delivery trucks that will be entering and leaving the site, which is pretty much what they anticipate in the proposal is the same as what's existing. There is a lab car that comes once a day to pick up and drop off, and my understanding is two times a week. There is a medical supply truck, which is a box truck that comes for a very short period of time to deliver medical supplies. And the only other deliveries that are happening are FedEx trucks or UPS trucks. So with that, with the short duration, both in the existing conditions and the proposed conditions, we do not feel that a dedicated loading zone would be required. Of course, we would need a waiver from that requirement, but based on those limited deliveries of smaller vehicles, we feel that is justified. Now going to what's proposed in terms of the ground signs for the project, which the architect will present in more detail. But just to let the board know, we have two proposed ground signs.
And one is a replacement of the existing ground sign?
That's correct.
And one is brand-new?
And one is brand-new. So at the southwest end of the property, adjacent to the Bartley Road, I'm sorry, the North County Line Road exit, is the first proposed ground sign, which will be 30 square feet, six foot high, so it's conforming. It's also going to be 25 feet off of that right-of-way, which is also conforming. And it, as mentioned, that is a replacement of where the existing sign is, which is actually a little closer to the right-of-way, which is not conforming. The second proposed monument sign is same 30 square feet, same sign, six foot high, but because it's being proposed along Bartley Road, and because we have the proposed parking area there, we were only able to have an eight-foot setback. But I would also point out that if you look at the north end of the property, you have a canopy of trees along the perimeter of the property from the adjacent nursing home drive. And with that, if we were to set it back 25 feet, even if the parking space, parking area was not being proposed, because it would be at this location, it would be difficult to see that sign coming south on Bartley Road, which was the main purpose of having that secondary sign. You have good visibility coming off of North County Line Road, but you do not have any visibility for that sign coming south on Bartley Road. In terms of the operation, existing operation has a five-day week, weekday operation from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, except for two days, which are actually 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM. And with the proposal, proposal is to have it five days a week, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And in terms of the number of employees and the expected number of patient load, the client gave us a very detailed breakdown. But the existing is at max nine employees in a day, and the number of patients being 16 at this point in time. And in the proposal with the expansion, they expect 12 to 13 employees with 19 to 20 patients visiting.
And those numbers are in the max hour for each of those categories? That's correct?
That's correct.
In the max hour?
Okay, moving along. Okay, moving along with the project in terms of drainage and grading, the project is not a major development as per the stormwater management rules. With the expansion to the parking area, the net increase is .15 acres, which is less than the .25 acre threshold for a major development. And also, there is less than one acre of total disturbance for the project. In terms of the expansion of the parking area, we proposed an underground infiltration system, 36-inch perforated pipe under the new parking area. And this will manage the two and the 10-year design storms for soil erosion purposes, as well as provide groundwater recharge for the project. In terms of utilities, we will have a new sanitary lateral to connect to the 8-inch PVC brandsaw in Bartley Road. The plan is to utilize the existing domestic water line, but we are proposing a new fire service lateral for the new sprinkler system within the, both the existing and proposed building. In terms of landscaping, we did provide a tree removal plan, which indicated with the removal of the trees we have for the project, that 20 replacement trees would be required. And we did provide that in the plan, and that plan was approved by the Township Foresters' review. In terms of the landscaping plan, we did provide native species around the perimeter of the project to both enhance some of the existing landscaping that was incorporated in the perimeter, including the street frontage on Bartley Road, where we think we've met the intent of the ordinance in terms of street trees and perimeter trees. We've also dressed up the monument signs with some decorative grasses, lily turf and mondo grasses. We provided foundation plantings around the new entrance area and accent plantings at the corners of the proposed and existing parking areas. In terms of the lighting, we provided 10 pole mounts and two wall mount, Lithonia fixtures, 15-foot-high pole mounts, 10-foot-high wall mounts, LED, all with houseside shields, with a minimum of .4-foot candles being proposed currently, which is slightly below the .5-foot candles in the ordinance, so we would ask for a waiver in that regard. Then I guess move to the reports. We'd start with the planner's report. As mentioned, in the traffic section, there's several waivers that we would request with regard to the parking areas. And this is specific to the fact that we're adding to an existing parking area, and some of these requirements would require a total reconstruction of the parking area. One of the waivers we would ask for is the requirement for three contiguous stalls to be proposed. So in one area, specifically at the northeast end of the addition, you have the handicap parking stall, that's a one-off. We only have one parking stall there. So we would ask for a waiver from that requirement just for that one stall. There's also a requirement to extend the minimum distance of 100 feet back from the street right-of-way or an entrance drive. Because of the limited size of the property, we cannot comply with that, nor can we comply with the minimum distance of 60 feet back from the street curb for an exit drive, for the same reason. There's a requirement that no parking stall shall utilize the required entrance and exit drives for the major circulation. This is obviously something we need a waiver from, as that is the existing condition. You could see the entrance and exit drives, the parking is off that, and that's how it is in the existing condition, and we believe it works pretty well. Mentioned the waiver for the .5-foot candles. Also, there is a requirement for a 10-foot-wide landscape island at the end of parking roads. We would ask for a waiver from that, because, once again, we're utilizing the existing parking lot, and that would have to, we would have to add safety islands into that and reduce the number of parking spaces. We don't feel that's justified based on our design. Everything else in the planner's letter, in terms of suggestions and notes, we would agree to. We would also ask for a waiver, I guess, in a five-foot minimum with landscaping area along the fence or wall near refuse area. I think we have two sides, which we think is adequate. We would request waiver from any more than that, the project. And I think everything else we can comply with in the planner's report. Going to the engineer's report. I think the only thing in the engineer's report, and this might have also been mentioned in the planner's report, is the issue of proposed sidewalk. We don't feel that sidewalk is warranted in this case, specifically because you have this off-ramp across the front part of the project, and then you have Hampshire Boulevard, which pretty much takes up most of the frontage on Bartley Road. So proposing a sidewalk here, there's really no good way to connect to the sidewalk across the street safely, in my opinion.
What about contributing to the sidewalk fund in lieu of?
In lieu of?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
You're agreeing to that?
Yes.
Yes. And I think that's it from my direct.
Okay. Thank you. Mr.?
Do you want to have any questions for this gentleman? No?
Could you repeat that last bit about the sidewalk?
I'm sorry, Mr. Dolan, can you repeat that?
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Tough technology, Jack. About the sidewalk, are you going to pay into the community sidewalk fund as opposed to building a sidewalk?
Yes, we agreed to that.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just couldn't hear.
No problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just one question from Mr. LaScavage.
Sure.
The new parking off of, or parallel to Barkley Road, a dozen spaces up against the existing building. We had a comment, they look like they're about two foot off the building. Should they be moved a little further away than two feet? Overhangs, protection?
I agree with you. I think that would require some relief on the buffer side of Bartley Road.
I'm in favor of safety over a dimensional requirement. Two feet just seems a little, a little close.
You agree to go to four feet?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Thank you. And Mr. LaScavage, briefly, just on some of the comments, the employees, it's generally one shift. There's some variation in who comes in early or late, but it's not multiple shifts, correct?
That's correct.
And medical waste is stored right now inside the building and removed by a private corridor, is that correct?
That's correct.
And that's how it'll continue?
That's the way it will continue.
Anybody have questions? No? You're going to have someone come up as far and testify as to what's going to be happening in this statement of operations?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I can certainly, we have representatives here from center state, I can certainly proffer as to what the uses are in the building now, however it pleases the board. Right, yeah, right now, what's in the building now are doctors' offices, and there's also a lab, a small lab in the building. It's going to stay that way. There might be the addition of some physical therapy. But other than taking advantage of a little more space, a few more offices, it's really going to stay doctors' offices, the private lab, and maybe some physical therapy. I can give you more detail from any of the other witnesses, but that's generally what the entire proposal is.
Okay. I think that's sufficient.
Okay.
Unless anybody else cares here? No?
Thank you. If it please, oh, wait, hold on.
Mr. Fleming? All of your restrictions from setbacks and such are all qualified. That building would be first thing in the air. Gas, clothes, and food?
Yes.
Right, furniture, food, equipment, automatics, etc. That building's not allowed. All of your concerns coming from the president, I haven't.
Yeah, around.
For the record?
Yes, yes, around us.
Yes.
All of it, sorry.
You said he was making a statement, so I didn't.
Nodding doesn't work.
I'm sorry. I didn't know, yeah, absolutely right, absolutely right.
Anybody else have any questions? Do we have anyone from the public who wishes to speak regarding this application? Do we have any hands up? No hands up. Do you have any further witnesses? Do you have further witnesses?
Yes, we'd like to bring our architect up briefly, if it pleases the board.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we had this brief discussion.
Sure.
Mr. Pfeffer, if you can come up, and for members, and for members of the public. Application number four in the agenda, block 19501, lot 35, Solomon Zolti. Mr. Pfeffer, you represent the applicant, correct?
Yes, I do.
In discussion with the chairman, it does not appear that you would be reached in a reasonable hour. You are sent to carry this matter.
Yes.
And you would be in discussions with the chairman. The board would be amenable, I'm presuming the chairman could ask, carry it one week, you would be behind the adventure crossing application.
That is fine.
It's acceptable to you?
Yes.
You waive time?
Yes.
Everybody okay with that? Okay. All right, good. So I guess I need a motion to carry block 19501, lot 35, Solomon Zolti Investments to the second application heard on our March 8, 2021 meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Justwicki?
Yes.
Mr. Luisci?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yes.
Mr. Hudek?
Yes.
And that'll be with no further notices and a waiver, fine?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Pfeffer, members of the public, that application, block 19501, lot 35, Zolti Investments, that matter shall be carried to the March 8, 2021 regular meeting of the planning board without the need of further notice. The members of the public interested in this application shall be directed to the municipal website and municipal publications for access to the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, I'll see you next week.
Okay, continuing along, Mr. Vitello?
Yes, yes, very good. Members of the board, I'd like to present Mr. Savarese, the applicant's architect. Mr. Savarese, you sworn?
Sir, do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation, and the chairman will ask you some questions regarding your expertise.
My name is Michael Savarese, S-A-V-A-R-E-S-E. Who operates at 34 Sycamore Avenue, Little Solid, New Jersey. Licensed architect in New Jersey since 1987. Licensed in New York, New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Virginia, Florida, Delaware.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Savarese, were the exhibits that were submitted as part of this application regarding the architecturals prepared under your direction and our control?
Yes, they were.
Thank you. Mr. Savarese, using your exhibits, can we start by describing for the board how the building currently exists and how the addition incorporates into the existing site?
Sure. The building is an existing one-story and basement building that is 92 by 30.
What exhibit would you start with? Would you just to give our team a chance to pull it up?
It's a set of plans of existing, proposed, and elevations.
Okay.
They're dated 8/19/20.
Let me, yes, we're just going to find those on the computer system. And Mr. Chairman, I'll mark those, I believe we're A3?
Yeah, yes.
It's actually both sides are A3.
For the record, it's a two-sided exhibit. I've marked both sides A3. Thank you.
So this first page of exhibit is page 1 of 1. It basically shows the existing footprint and elevation of the existing practice. Building is 37 by 92. It has a main entry foyer, and exam offices ring around the center area, work area, and lounge for the practice, the regular medical practice, doctors and exam rooms, and a lab in the back. Second sheet is also sheet 1 of 1, same date, 8/19/2020, which shows the actual 37 by 92 existing office with... Yes, proposed.
Yes.
Should be the next sheet. There you go.
Thank you.
So the additions to this building is going to be 78 by 38, so 38 across by 78, and the 49-square-foot new foyer, if you will. So what it does, it combines the two waiting areas for the two sides of the practice, so they can have common use in the center. The rehab center on one side, that has a small gym, some speech therapy treatment areas, and a larger lab after the first one. It's a very simple addition. It takes advantage of the architectural style of the building and adds, brings it to the element of design a little bit further along. This is, I guess, 1970s building, trying to make it into a 2020s building. Now I'd like to show you the renderings.
And this one we're going to mark as A4. Called R4? So for the record, what's labeled A4 actually has a title that's R4.
Yes, it is.
No, I don't, is that one? I think it's different one.
That's the other one.
Yeah, it's a red car. We need a... Yeah, it's a red car. We need a. Get there.
Keep it up, we're going back real quick.
They're giving away.
There you go.
Thank you.
So, what this rendering shows is how this is the existing side of the building, which we're introducing the drive-it face to the east face. Continuing with the brick base and taking the roof and making a standing seam roof that ties it together. In the front of the building, where we add the two together, the larger foyer, we have a covered entry, a little bit of a better sign band, and a more U-turn here and some glass in the foyer to make it bright inside of the waiting area. And this is showing you the ramping in the back to get in from this, from the backside of the site to get into the front of the building with ease and meet handicap accessibility. So we go to the next one, R1?
That'll be A5. A5 will be R1.
First one.
Yeah.
Going back.
Okay. There you go. That's basically looking at it at the main pedestrian walkway to get to one side parking lot and the main parking lot, and the one that's to the, I guess, east. Has set of stairs, decent sized handicap ramp to get you up to the main entry. Shows you the large window again underneath the main sign, bringing the light into the foyer, and the door is in the corner where it's the Center State Health Pavilion. And where the standing seam roof go together, that's where the door to the entry is for the public.
And, Mr. Savarese, can I interrupt you real quick on that exhibit? You see the coloring there of the Center State logo. There is a rebranding going on where those colors will shift more towards an orange, two or three shades of orange slash yellow. So in the end, the applicant may end up constructing something like that with those yellow or shades. We would still comply with your ordinance, your maximum of four colors, and sign for your ordinance. But I just wanted to let the board know that that's how marketing goes with a big rebranding.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Savarese.
At the time we did the rendering, that was the direction, but it's typically happened, the signs keep on changing to keep sign companies a business. And next one, speaking of signs, so it's a typical monument sign.
And this is gonna be A6 for the record, and what's the title?
It's R4.
So R?
I'm, R3, I'm sorry.
R3 is gonna be A6.
So basically, this is a typical monument sign. Again, with the branding and the color, this will probably change to an orange color. But the idea of the monument signs is to mimic the building with two piers on either side, with the brick on the bottom, with a drive-it, a drive-it, and a roof over the sign to make it a good-looking ground element to enhance the property, enhance the building. And it'll be two like this, as the engineer has told us before. And the last rendering is just zooms in on that front door.
And just for the record, we're gonna mark this A7, but it has a note on it that's R2 in the title.
Well, basically, the intent of the rendering is to show you more how the ramp works and how the front door works, and it's covered by the canopy that wraps around the pavilion sign for Center States. I think it's a aesthetically pleasing design. It's keeping the building, while it almost doubles in size of the building, it still keeps it at a very nice human scale. It's not overpowering by bringing the elements of the building, that the brick pier and the mansard roof and changing it from shakes to standing seam. I think it brings this building into the 20th century.
And, Mr. Savarese, right now, what's the basement used for?
Basement is just pure storage.
Okay, and the proposal going forward is to continue.
Pure storage, yeah.
And the applicant would agree to a restriction that the basement would only be used for storage purposes? And, Mr. Savarese, does the building have any fire sprinklers in it now?
No, we will be putting them in now.
So they'd be proposed in both the new and the old section as part of the application?
Yep.
Thank you. That's all the direct testimony I have from Mr. Savarese. If there's any questions, we'd be glad to get into anything further.
Mr. Riker?
In regard to the signage, is there any lighting proposed on the ground-mounted signage?
It's eliminated face on the ground sign.
Okay, good, thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases the board, my next witness would be my traffic engineer, who is virtual. Up, and there we are.
Hello?
So, yes, Michelle, Ms. Brehoff, can you indicate if you can hear us and see us?
Yes, I can hear you guys. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, good.
Ms. Brehoff, I think Mr. Gertner is gonna have you sworn.
So ma'am, you're shaking your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board shall represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation, and the chairman will ask you for some of your qualifications.
Sure. Michelle, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E, last name Brehoff, B as in boy, R-I-E-H-O, F as in frank.
And you're a physician?
Sure. So I'm the Assistant Department Manager at Colliers Engineering and Design, most recently Maser Consulting. I am a graduate of Northeastern University with a degree in Civil and Environmental Engineering. I've been working as a traffic engineer for 12 years. I've testified in front of numerous boards. I have been to Jackson, I don't remember if I actually testified. But I was, I was there not that long ago. But I have testified in Colts Neck, Freehold, Manalapan, plenty of local boards.
Thank you. We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Brehoff, have you reviewed the plans and other application materials submitted as part of this application?
Yes, I did.
And have you reviewed the consulting review reports written by the board's consultants?
I have, yes.
So with regard to the questions raised in those reports, I'd like you to describe for the board the traffic circulation that's proposed, the parking that's proposed, and your opinion on how the access points, including the proposed cross-access easement, will function and support the proposed expansion.
Sure. So, in regards to the site access, we are proposing to maintain the access on Bartley Road as well as the cross-connection that currently exists on the property. After reviewing the parking layout and the site layout plan, you know, we do feel that the site itself does support two-way circulation throughout the site and adequate maneuverability for the design vehicles, such as an emergency vehicle, garbage truck, box trucks, and passenger vehicles typical to a site of this nature. As far as the, the number of parking spaces, we did include in our traffic assessment some reference material specifically from the Institute of Transportation Engineers and how it relates to parking for a typical medical dental office. What ITE suggests, or what they publish, is a peak parking demand of 4.9, 4.59 spaces per thousand, which would equate to a total of 47 spaces for a development of this size. So referencing ITE, we do feel that the proposed parking supply is adequate for this site. Just also to, to touch on the, the site expansion itself. Again, referencing the Institute of Transportation Engineers, they also published trip generation data. And based on the 2,900 roughly square foot addition, this would generate an additional 26 peak hour trips. And what ITE and DOT use as their threshold when they determine what a significant increase in traffic would be is typically 100 trips. So we're well below that 100-trip threshold.
Thank you.
And that's really, yeah, that, that concludes my, my draft, unless I missed something.
And I believe the reports refer to a cross-access easement. I think there may even be an indication of an existing one. There actually is, it would be a proposed. So there would be a proposed cross-access easement. Right now, the site's in common ownership, with the site behind us where the driveway, the internal driveway currently runs, and as part of our rights to purchase that property, there is a right to acquire the necessary easement to basically allow those two facilities in terms of their internal circulation to operate exactly as they're operating now, so vehicles can freely move between them.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for this witness?
Ma'am, Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
In terms of that cross-access easement, will that provide for maintenance of the entire?
So luckily, just two sites right next to each other, line right down the middle, each property owner's gonna maintain their own property. And so there will be no cross-maintenance. There will be a provision that if one owner fails to perform maintenance or fails to plow snow after a significant period of time, the other owner would have the right to maintain that, get rid of that snow, and charge the other, as is typical in a fairly standard cross-access.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anyone else?
I do have one question. I'm not sure if this is the right one. On the corner of the ramp coming off County Line onto Barkley Road, you said you were gonna put a sign there. I'm concerned about visibility. I've been to that intersection. It's not the easiest. How do you, how do you think you, how do you think you can set that sign up and minimize problems?
Sure. So, so the ground side that you're referencing, and Mark or somebody in the room, I don't know if it's possible to put the site plan exhibit back up on the screen? Or as well in the room?
A2. What was A2?
Does that need to be put up virtually as well, just so everyone can see?
Scenario, I believe.
It was the, just for members of the public, if you can't find it, it's the color rendering site plan.
Sure. So the, the proposed ground sign, if we were to... Yes, thank you. If we were to, I don't know, you probably can't see, see my cursor, but anyway, if you were at the, the ramp with Bartley Road, the proposed sign would be well out of the, the site triangle that one would need to make that turn. So it's set far back enough from the road that I don't think it would cause a visual disturbance to, to the drivers.
The only reason I say is I actually happen to use that ramp frequently. When you come off County Line Road, you're going to make a right on Bartley. You have to have a pigeon's neck to look left. And if there's anything blocking you, it's only gonna be unsafe. That's the reason I bring it up.
Understood, yes. And, and like I said, I'm confident that the, the sign would be located well out of what we would call the site triangle to be able to, to make those turns safely.
So you're confident that it will serve your needs but not be a liability?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anyone else? No? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to present my last witness would be my professional planner, who's testifying virtually. Ms. Lawler, I believe. Oh, there she is, Ms. Lawler. Can you hear us, Ms. Lawler? Can you see us?
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Lawler, if you'd raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board shall represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, your affiliation, and briefly, the chairman's acceptance, some of your credentials?
Sure. My name is Deborah Alamo Lawler, L-A-W-L-O-R. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I hold a national credential with the American Institute of Certified Planners, which I am the immediate past president nationally. I have a bachelor's degree in environmental planning and design and a master's in geography. I have over 40 years of experience in the field of land use and environmental planning. I'm currently the discipline leader for planning for Colliers Engineering and Design. And as Michelle just noted, you know, we were just previously rebranded from Maser Consulting. Let's see, I've testified before boards throughout the state.
Hold on. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry?
We accept your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lawler, you've reviewed the application materials and the submission to the board, correct?
Yes.
And you reviewed the municipal ordinance and master plan regarding this area of the municipality?
Yes.
So, Ms. Lawler, you've also heard the testimony here tonight regarding the variances that the applicant is requesting in waivers?
Yes.
Thank you. So can you, can you please just describe for the board the burden that the applicant's under, under the MLUL regarding the relief requested, and whether or not, in your opinion, the applicant meets that burden?
Yes, and actually, I'm going to go through the variances, and I'll explain which, which points of the municipal land use law are met under each of the variances. I believe that, I believe that they do meet the criteria to satisfy the variances. I also agree with the waivers that Mr. LaScavage had mentioned earlier, and he had kind of provided a lot of detail, so I'll try to be brief on those as I go through.
Thank you, yes, perfect.
Okay. So, as, as was mentioned to you, we're looking at 7,370 square foot addition onto the existing building that is just under three, I'm sorry, the opposite way, 3,000 square foot addition onto the existing 7,370 square foot existing building, along with a 49 square foot vestibule addition. The property is currently in the highway commercial zone. The adjacent land uses are compatible with the medical professional offices, including the Bartley Healthcare Nursing and Rehabilitation Center. There's assisted living facilities in the immediate area. And across the roadway, there are residential developments. The subject property is known as the Family Healthcare Bartley Corner. Just not to take you through everything, but the modifications to the existing parking area and the site circulation, including the removal of 11 existing parking spaces to construct 12 in the front of the building, is a change. We have waivers that deal with the significant landscaping that's being proposed to be added, new lighting, as Mark had mentioned, the two ground signs that we've been talking about. There's also a 64-square-foot wall sign being proposed. And the removal of the existing septic system in connection to the public sewer. In terms of zoning, the, the proposed use is permitted under the definition professional office. And as we were noting previously, under one of the other testimonies, professional offices are permitted in the neighborhood commercial zone, and all of the neighborhood commercial zone uses are incorporated into the highway commercial zone. So they're all permitted uses. So in my opinion, the professional office medical is a permitted use. In terms of the variances that are being requested, we have the one C variance for the minimum step back from the right-of-way, and we have pre-existing non-conformities that are going to be remaining for minimum lot depth. that are going to be remaining for minimum lot depth, minimum front yard. And one of the minimum setbacks from the right-of-way also is a pre-existing non-conforming, non-conformity, and we also have the minimum setback from the property line. And I will go through each of these. In terms of the C variance, the C2 variance for parking setback from a right-of-way, the requirement is 20 feet. Existing is 19.6 feet to Barclay Road from approximately 123 feet to North County Line Road ramp. And then the proposed would be 23 feet to the Bartley Road and 18.8 feet to North County Road, County Line Road ramp. So the 18.8 is really the minimum that we are proposing, and the required would be 20. So in terms of the C variance relief that's being sought, the purpose A of the municipal land use law to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate development of land or lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. We believe that that is met in terms of the proposed setback to the parking area not being significantly deficient, since it's at 18.8 in comparison to the 20 that is required. Additionally, the existing parking spaces along Bartley Road are proposed at a setback of 19.6. That is an existing non-conformity. As I mentioned, the proposed parking setbacks don't significantly deviate from the existing conditions. There's not a change in the use in any way for those parking spaces. And therefore, we believe that the proposed parking would be screened from the ramp by trees to try to soften the impact of being any closer, and we feel that this meets the purpose A. In terms of purpose I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements, the applicant proposes to significantly screen the proposed parking area from both North County Road and Bartley with trees and two-to-three-foot tall shrubs. Additionally, the landscaping proposed throughout the site is meant to further create a desirable environment. The proposed efficient setback to the parking area from the ramp of North County Line Road does not present a substantial detriment to the public good. The parking area is setback only 1.2 feet less than what's required. Additionally, the setback to the drive aisle of the parking area, whereas the proposed parking spaces are roughly 40 feet from North County Road ramp. So furthermore, this proposed parking area will be screened by maple shade trees and many of the two-to-three-foot tall shrubs. Additionally, as I had mentioned, there are the following pre-existing non-conforming conditions that exist on the property. The minimum lot depth, the required is 200 feet, and the existing is 146.79 feet, as was previously discussed. Some of these non-conformities are due to the ramp location that took a part of the side, part of the triangle along the edge of the property. The second existing non-conformity is minimum front yard setback, where required is 60 feet, and the existing is 48.9 feet to North County Line Road ramp. The next one is the minimum parking setback to non-residential use, where required is 10 feet, and we have a 9.8-foot setback existing. The, in terms of the municipal land use law, purpose I is met. The proposed addition to the existing medical office building does not encroach into any of the required yard setbacks or increase the building coverage beyond that which is permitted. Additionally, the existing parking spaces along the northern property line are not proposed to be modified and would not further encroach into the required right-of-way setback and non-residential use setbacks. And as no changes are proposed to modify the lot depth, the existing building in the front yard and the parking spaces along the northern property line, there will be no significant detriment to adjacent properties, and the character of the neighborhood would not be impaired. Also, the pre-existing non-conforming condition will be maintained and would not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance beyond what currently exists there today. Mark LaScavage, the engineer, went through the waivers in depth, and I would just ask if you want me to reiterate them at this time, or?
No, I don't think that would be necessary unless any board members want that.
Okay.
I'm also going to ask, I'm going to ask one clarification.
Sure.
There was a request tonight, there was a suggestion tonight that the applicant might take the new parking lot that's in front of the building and slide that parking lot two feet further away from the building, pushing the parking lot two feet closer to the road. And that was a suggestion. The applicant has no problem with that. We would do that. We just wanted to note, that also pushes our, pushes our parking lot closer to the road, but it pushes the sign. We needed a variance for eight feet from the road for a sign setback. That would push that sign to six feet. So if it pleases the board, we would request the six-foot relief. Mr. LaScavage could add any detail you want, but I'm going to ask my planner if that changes her opinion.
No, that doesn't change my opinion. And as, and the reason being is, as was discussed earlier, that location, if you are driving, I believe it's to the south, would not actually be impairing anybody's visibility because there are trees just beyond the driveway on the other side. So it's the location of the driveway being identified.
Great.
And the building. So...
Any questions for Ms. Lawler?
Anyone? No? Okay. Thank you so much for your testimony.
No problem. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that's all the direct testimony we have. I think we've also answered all the questions we've had so far tonight. Spoke to the reports also. I don't know if you want to make sure there's no public comment.
All right, yeah, at this time, I'd like to open this up to public comment. Is there anyone in the public that cares to comment on this application or ask questions? Please raise their hand. Anyone? No one. And Mr. Chairman, I ask, just for the record, how many public members, if you can tell? How many, how many people are on? Seven attendees. Thank you. All right. Anyone have any question? So the matter's closed to the public, seeing? Seeing none, yes. Can I have a motion to close the public?
Close the public, sir.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? No? Okay. Motion, we have a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker? Mr. Dislikie? Mr. Luise? Mr. Wall? Mr. Fleming? Mr. Haring? Mr. Hudak?
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your help and your technical competence. Excellent, excellent presentation materials. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.